Through the flag of the United States of America, to the Father, for which stands one nation, individual liberty and justice.
Please take the roll call.
Counselor Richards?
Here.
Counselor Thorsten?
Here.
Pro Tem Muller?
Here.
Mayor Coleman?
Present.
Counselor Trask?
Present.
Counselor Gorley?
Present.
Counselor Sanchez?
Here. We have seven present and no absent. Moving on to the consent agenda, please note there's two meeting minutes in there.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve approve the consent agenda. Please take a roll call.
Counselor Trask?
Yes. I guess I was trying to look something else.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Thorsten?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
We have seven ayes and no nays to approve the consent agenda. Moving on, recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. This would be the time, Tina, if you'd like to come forward, this would be the time to do so. And when you get up to the mic, please state your name and your address. Okay?
Yes, please. Tina, I'm in. My address is 1546 41st Avenue, kind of across the street in Sweet Home.
Okay. What brings you here tonight?
Because sometimes I might forget, so I'm going to write it down. One page. I'm representing our kind of pro tem. She doesn't really know I'm here, but the lady that I've been a friend of for the last probably nine months now is Judy Molton, and she was removed from her home because her home has been condemned. And first of all, having her come out of her home has been a huge blessing for us to see that she is better, so that she is in a safe place and that she is not going to be in harm. And I just want to thank all the people that were involved in that decision and in that move. The first responders and all the teams of people that came together, the social security, social workers that were involved, all of that, that helped relocate her to where she is now in a more clean environment, which is key. And now she's getting healthcare and she's getting, be able to go to her doctors and what have you, so that she can be a, you know, healthy person. All that. That was because, all that happened, it's because she was falling through the cracks. And she was, she had some issues mentally that needed to be addressed, and I don't know if they are being addressed. But that being said, she is now being in a safe place. So I do have some questions, though. Her house has been condemned. So is that property now not hers anymore?
That's a great question. I'm going to refer to staff to address that question.
So yes, she is still the owner of record of that property. The building, as you are aware, is unsafe. And so the process now is that the city has started work on, we've cleaned up the outside so that we could verify the condition of the outside of the structure. The next step is to go inside and see what the condition of the structure is on the inside. There's a lot in there, and that's a major barrier at this point, is we need to get all that stuff out so that we can see what the condition is of the inside. Once we see what the condition is, we can have a better idea of what needs to happen. Now, when a structure is condemned, what happens is the owner of the property is still responsible for it, and they are given the choice of, okay, you either need to bring this property up to code, or you need to demolish it. And that's what the owner has the choice of doing. Now, in this case, we have an owner that's probably not capable of doing either of those things. And that's the wrinkle. So when the property is condemned, a deadline is given, that property owner is given a deadline of how long before they either correct it or demolish it, before the city moves in. And the city then would have to determine whether to correct or improve the building or something, or to demolish it. And then what the city would do is the cost of that would be placed as, it would be billed to the owner, and then if they are not able to pay, it would go as a lien on the property, and ultimately, the city would need to foreclose in order to get that money back. And so whether it will be demolished or not is really dependent on a lot of factors here, and we just don't know what the condition is. And so that's, it's not, there's a lot of rumors going around about this particular property, and we just want to make it clear that there's, we don't know that it's definitely going to be demolished, but we don't know that it's definitely going to be saved either, because we don't own the property and we don't have control. If we do take control, the issue becomes one of funding. Does the city have enough to correct the building? Everything I know about that structure tells me that it would be a very expensive prospect, possibly a million dollars or more, to bring it up to code.
When you go into the house, you'll have to have special things on your face, so you don't breathe in what's in there. It's pretty bad.
Yeah.
Just on that note, it is posted no trespassing, no one is allowed in there, and I just want to make sure we publicly state that we are working with the owner that if there's anything that she wants removed from there and she has someone to do it, if we know someone is authorized, we can, we can allow them in temporarily to get what needs to be retrieved. But it is not a structure that we want anyone in at all.
She does have the option of signing someone, and if they contact you, for example?
They can contact me, or they can take contact Blake Dawson, our code compliance officer. There were some folks that were helping her, and I think that has ended.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I think the help is still needed, so if there are others who are around and able to help her, that certainly, we want to encourage that.
Okay, so that was it. Yeah, so my biggest thing was to find out what the situation was about that, and to find out what we, as people who love her and want to take care of the things around her, but not enable her to be able to work with her and try to help her as much as we can. Now, clearly, I can't do a lot, especially in that one house, because I've seen it, and it's not a friendly place for people with pains or wheelchairs or anything. There's just no room.
Yeah.
So, and I'm thinking, she was telling me that the church mouse is in worse condition because somebody had gone in there and rummaged through everything and threw things around. And so I don't know what this, she's just going from memory, because she hasn't been in there in years, because she said somebody barred the door, so she couldn't get in. And so I don't know who was helping her before that did that, but, you know, I wasn't here, so I couldn't help her with that anyway.
Well, I really appreciate your caring for your neighbor like that, and showing your concern, and showing up and addressing that, and letting us know that she's in a healthy place right now.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the questions, so that rumors can be stilled.
Yeah.
But also, yeah. Also, we know that the city is really involved in this and working to resolve these issues, so thank you for coming forward.
Good to know.
Appreciate it, Tina. Any other visitors that would like to come forward? Okay. Moving on, there is no old business, so we have new business, 14th Avenue Street Closure for Harvest Festival.
With Angela here, I was assuming she would, but she's busy. As you all are no doubt aware, at least we hope so, Harvest Festival is coming up. This is the biggest event of the year that the city itself puts on, and so it is, has been growing over the years, and this year is looking to be bigger than ever. I believe we have over seventy-five? Vendors? Seventy-eight vendors? So, and we've attracted thousands of people there in previous years. So it's a big one at Sankey Park on October 7. This necessitates a partial closure of 14th Avenue, closure of one section to make sure that it's safe for people attending and for the various events that we have going on. And so we are asking for approval of this resolution, Resolution Number 25 for 2023, and that would close 14th Avenue between the Ames Creek Bridge to the south side of the intersection at Grape Street from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on October 7. Residential access would be allowed, and all appropriate signs and other markings will be installed by city staff. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those and refer them probably to Angela.
Any questions of counselors? I just want to say thank you, Angela, for such a thorough report in our notes. I appreciate that. I'll inter-
I was just gonna say, just one update. You have the vendor, the map. There's a lot more booths on there now, but I decided it probably wasn't going to make a difference to replace it, but there's a whole lot more actually on the most current map. So if you're interested to see what it looks like, come by my desk.
Okay, sounds good. I will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 25 for 2023. Please take a vote.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Thorsten?
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes. We have seven ayes and no nays. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, it is the resolution setting rates for stormwater drainage utility services.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to hand this over to Matt Brown to really discuss it in detail. These will all have to do with the presentations, and if at any time you want any of the presentations that we looked at in our workshop to come back, please feel free to ask. And while we do have recommendations, like I mentioned, we are always open to hearing what council would like as well. So feel free to add additional recommendations and feel free to bring up any questions to discuss. So I'm going to hand it over to Matt. We're all three of them.
So the first resolution, Number 26, is for the stormwater drainage utility service. This is the fee that is currently for residential customers, $3. That $3 is made up of currently $2.40 of a commodity rate, and then 60 cents for your base rate. All we are doing is increasing that by a similar percentage of the total to get $4. So it's going to be an 80 cent base rate, and then a $3.20 commodity rate, getting you to the $4. And that same percentage increase is applied to the outside city customers as well.
If I may add one more thing, if it would help council to change the order of any of these, or to discuss them all at once, and then come back and vote on them, we could do that as well.
Okay. Any preference of council? Okay, any questions of council? I just wanted to have Director Brown maybe reiterate this, what we learned a little bit earlier was we haven't done anything with the stormwater plan since 1980. Is that accurate?
The stormwater master plan was last updated in 1980.
And we-
A dollar, a gallon of gas was a dollar eighteen, I think.
So we haven't raised rates but once or twice?
There's been two rate increases since 2004. I believe there was one in 2000, I want to say six or eight, I'm trying to remember off the present.
We had one year.
Yeah, you had one in 2008, and then another one in 2018.
2021, I think.
Twenty-one, okay. Yeah. In the storm, there were two rate increases since 2004.
Madam Mayor, I got a question on-
Speak into your mic, please. Speak into your mic, please. Just talk into it.
What does it say? It says something about adopt Resolution Number 28 for 2023 with changes. What is the changes?
Would you're looking at Resolution 26?
No, there's a typo in our request for council action where it actually says our option is to adopt Resolution Number 28. It really should read 26. But the changes would be what a counselor, if the council chooses to make a change to the resolution. Any other questions of counselors?
Do you like me to continue going through all of the resolutions at once, or would you prefer to pass one at each time?
Let's just pass one individually.
Okay.
Yep. So I will entertain a motion for this resolution.
I'll make a motion on Number 3, Resolution Number 26 for 2023.
That's with changes. That's with changes. Do you have recommendations for changes? No? Okay. So would you like to adjust your motion, then?
Currently proposed, perhaps?
Oh, that one. Okay. Then it's 26 or 28?
26.
Okay. Resolution 28, 26 for 2023 as currently proposed.
We have a motion for, to adopt Resolution 26 for 2023 as currently proposed. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call for a vote.
Can, do we have discussion if we second?
Yes.
Okay. So can you let me know if this is to annually increase this by this percentage rate, or to bring back to the council, or? A little more clarification, please. Right now, if we were to adopt Option 2, that would be for one year.
So the motion on the table right now is just for one year and to come back next year to review.
May I make a friendly amendment? To make this annually for the next three years, subject to annual review.
Okay. So now we will take a vote on the amendment. Do we need a second on the amendment? Yes, I believe we do. So would somebody like to second the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, we have an amendment and a second. Now we'll take a vote on just the amendment, not on the motion.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorsten?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
No.
Okay, we have six ayes and one nay on the amendment. So the motion that now stands on the table is Resolution Number 26 for 2023. The amendment was to enact it annually for the next three years with annual review, correct? Okay, so is there any discussion on that motion? Here. Please.
So.
Yes, it will still be discussed and brought to us yearly. Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, any other further questions? Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may. So can you just reiterate what the raise is? Because I know we talked about it during our work session, but I don't think I see it inside of this motion. So I'd like to be for sure what we're raising it to.
So the stormwater rate would increase from $3 to $4 for residential customers?
So $1?
$1.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call for a vote. Angela, could you call for a vote?
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorsten?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
We have seven ayes and no nays to approve Resolution Number 26 for 2023. I want to thank staff on this, and I'll probably reiterate it. Thank you for working so diligently to try and keep these increases as low as possible. Moving on, a resolution setting rates for water utility services.
So on the Resolution Number 27, page 3, is where you see the majority of the changes and the increases. These increases reflect a staff recommendation of a 3% increase. You can see, for instance, the three-quarter inch, which is a regular residential house on average. Your base fee that is currently at $19.99 goes to $20.59, and then your commodity rate goes from $9.25 to $9.53, equating to roughly a 3% increase.
Any questions of counselors?
So Madam Mayor, if I may, I just want to say again, the only thing that I'm concerned about with this increase is having some sort of safety net or some safeguard for our most impacted customers, our fixed income seniors and working families that are really low income. So I think if nobody else wants to make a discussion, I would like to make a motion for adoption of Resolution Number 28 with the changes to add the $20,000 for grant opportunities for people that need assistance for all of their utility bills.
I will second that.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I believe that's outside of the scope of this resolution.
I'm gonna, yeah.
So what I would recommend that we would do there is ask to bring that back to the council at the next council meeting with that full process ready to be in place. And at that point, we can also give the council the information of how much revenue came in from the state and from Lynn County. And the amount also could be determined at that time. So that would be probably my recommendation on how we would proceed in order to keep this still with this particular agenda item, on just dealing with the rate.
So how do I state that? Because for me to increase water rates, that has to be something that we have in place. So what should I say?
I'd like to interject. We have to to get the loans that we want. We have to make some adjustments. And as painful as this is, it costs us more if we don't. It will cost our community more if we don't. And I think that's the message our community deserves to hear, because it's the truth. And I'm not opposed to being able to have other revenues set aside to help people that are having problems with leaks and things like that. That's just a separate discussion. But this, if we don't do this, and I guess this is the hard decision to be on the council.
Counselor Sanchez, you asked a question about what you can do. I think in the good of the order, bring it up as an agenda item for our next council meeting, so that we can have final figures on those expected income from, or revenue from the state. And let's address it, then, to have it put on as an agenda item.
At that time, make, I'm sorry, at that time, you can make, you can add that.
Okay, thank you. I'll do that, then. So I-
And just as point of clarification as well, there was another typo there. This is Resolution Number 27. So just so you know, if you make motion, it's Resolution Number 27. Okay, so I'll redact that one and take it for the good of the order for my change, but like Counselor Gorley said, unfortunately, this is something that we have to do, not something that we want to do, and we won't be able to protect our community if we don't. So I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 27 for 2023 as proposed.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion for the motion on the table?
Okay, so Madam Mayor?
Yes.
This was, this is a lot. So what we did last resolution was to do it for the next three years with an annual review, but we just agreed that this one would just be on an annual review for the water? Okay, thank you.
That's what the proposed was. Yes, correct. So hearing no further discussion, can we please take a vote on this resolution, please?
Counselor Richards?
No.
Counselor Thorsten?
Yep.
Pro Tem Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes. We have six ayes and one nay regarding Resolution 27 for 2023. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, a resolution setting rates for sewer utility services.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Resolution 28 for the sewer utility service, this rate increase is, speaks to Counselor Gorley's comment on must do the rate increases to get the loan, to fix your sewer plant, to continue things moving forward. So the rate increases that are recommended by staff is the similar to water, which is a 3% increase this current fiscal year. So all of the rate increases would go into effect the next billing cycle.
So is this really 28, or is it?
This one really is 28. I will take blame on the 27 and 26, the previous resolution typos.
I'll make a motion to, unless you have any more questions?
I do. Madam Mayor, if I may. So my only concern, and I'm really hesitant to raise rates, okay, but I know that inflation has caused our dollar to be worth less, and I'm terribly concerned about the price of construction exploding on us again. And so I don't know if the 3% at the dollar such and so is going to be enough to cover us in case there's any overage or astronomical prices. And so I think it's a little low. I can speak to that. You are correct. If there is another pandemic, if prices go up, if our bids come in a lot higher than we are projecting, we may need to discuss this again. However, because of the way that we're trying to structure this, where it can, we can start building a reserve over those five years while we're doing construction, this gives us time to start building that reserve and getting everything into place while still being a sustainable rate that our community can handle. So we do not know what the future is going to bring. We do know that we need to do something, and that's where we are. If council decides that you want to have a higher rate, that would definitely put us in a stronger position moving forward.
Madam Mayor, I'd recommend that we do the 3% over several years, then your view each year. And that way, if you look like things are going differently, at that time, you can adjust accordingly.
So my only concern is that it's just going to be such a huge increase, because we just were so conservative that it's going to sting even more. So I don't necessarily want to go more than 3%, but with the way construction is going, and with the way cost overruns and all these type of materials and all this type of stuff, I just, I'm very nervous, because we've already doubled the cost of this project, and we're only asking for a dollar and some change. I'm nervous.
Well, I agree, I totally 100% agree with you. But I think, like I say, you do 3%, and on annual review next year, you may say, okay, I need to do five, or four, or, you know, at that time, I'm talking about annual review, look to see where your position is. So if it looks like it's going to come in higher, then yeah, you'll have to make an adjustment. Madam Mayor, Counselor, do you have a number in your thought for raising it?
Counselor, do you have a number in your thought for raising it?
Three point two. Not like four percent. I mean, not a lot, but I'm just, I'm so nervous because we've already seen the price double. And I can just only imagine what it's going to turn out to be when we actually get to that point and we're still going to struggle like we have been. And so while we're doing this now, why raise it five or six percent next year when we can just go four percent or something like that, just to make sure that we're covered and we're not upsetting people any more than we already are?
You can do four percent, but again, with an annual review, then next year, come back and see where you stand.
Personally, I like the three percent because I know that this gets us approved for the loan that we need. And so then we could come back and look at it after we've got the loan in place and our funding is actually secured. And then we can truly look at what the financial situation is then. But I, yeah, that's my personal thoughts of that.
So solvent.
Right.
And this is a recommendation we've gotten, and there is nothing stopping our staff from coming back to us and saying, look, you need to adjust this. Because they're the ones keeping an eye on it, and this is the recommendation. So it sucks. And you're right, it's costing us a lot of money, and it's going to keep costing us a lot of money. But I think we're getting there, and it's better to do baby steps because the other rate increases on our community that we've had to make tonight.
So I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Twenty-Eight for 2023 as proposed.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second that.
And I have a second. Any discussion?
Just clarification, we do this on annual review for years? You're just going to do it here?
I would like for an annual review, like you guys were stating, because there's no way for us to push this out three years. I think we just have to, yeah, that's what I think.
So we're looking at three percent for one year.
Right.
And then we'll come back with an annual review. And at that point, we should also have our bids in, and the loan should have been approved, and we should have more final numbers.
Okay. So we're voting on Resolution Number Twenty-Eight with an annual review and hopefully have our bids in at that time and our loan secured. So if there's no further discussion, Angela, would you please take a vote?
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Pro Tim Muller?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
No.
Counselor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
We have six ayes and one nay moving Resolution Twenty-Eight forward. Just want to say again, thank you to staff. I know that was not easy. There's many projects that we know that need to be done that have not been included in this plan because we don't want to harm our residents as far as those rates go. But we just thank you for the work you've done. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, purchase of bathroom, shower, and laundry trailers.
All right, thank you. So this one has to do with the grant. Well, yes, it's the E S G C V grant funding that the county is giving us and that you all approved the contract with CSC last council session. And as I mentioned before, there are very, very specific things that can be used with this grant funds. And we are not able to be as creative in certain areas as we would like to be. However, we are still working on getting quite a bit of funding back to us from things that have already been spent. And what we are looking at here are purchasing two shower trailers. One to be at the police department, and it will be locked and only available for those residents at the police department who are following the rules. But it will also be available to families and to travelers who are car camping and so forth, as long as they are still following the rules that we have put in place. There will also be another one at FAC in order to have those residents have additional facilities. They are growing some of their little hut spaces, shelter spaces. And so this will help provide them additional services as well. We are also looking at a laundry trailer. And as I think you all are aware, it's very challenging to do laundry in Sweet Home right now. And the FAC does not have a laundry trailer facility. And so this would be able to provide for a laundry trailer. Now officially, all of this has to just be available for our homeless residents and those that are close to experiencing homelessness. However, if we have something, like I said, close to experiencing homelessness in some sort of emergency or evacuation, this could be used for that as well. So I do want to mention that we are still working through some other purchases. This has been quite the whirlwind because we only have until September thirtieth, which is Saturday, to have actually spent the funding. That means the checks need to have been signed and sent out by that date. So these particular purchases have been approved by the funding authority. But it is beyond the threshold that I can approve. So we did go out and get our three quotes and do everything that we could that way. We needed to bring them to you for approval. Then what will happen next is immediately, if it is approved by council tonight, we will order them and purchase them over the next couple of days, and then we will submit them for reimbursement.
City Manager Young, I just want to say thank you again for working so well with Commissioner Tucker. And we will discuss that later about Commissioner Tucker, but we're just grateful for the work he's done to get us this grant funding. So this is separate funding than other things and a very specific use. So just thank you for working on this. Any questions of counselors?
We did everything on just trying to, but I'll let Blair speak to that a little bit too, because he helped. Yes.
There were previous quotes from these same firms that combined them all into one. And in examining those on a line-by-line basis, it was actually deemed to be a better use of funding to separate them. And so, because one firm had better prices for the shower trailer and the other firm had better prices for the laundry.
Yeah, I noticed that, but he really, for the one, was only five thousand, not even quite five thousand difference. So I was thinking of, like NRT, if they come together with both, discount out, get both, get both.
It unfortunately didn't work out that way, where there was a, yeah.
It was pulling pulls down.
So Madam Mayor, may I ask?
So technically, this is free money that we either use it or lose it, right? Okay, and next, is the laundry or the showers going to be free? Are they going to be per use? Are we going to be the ones paying for the water and the sewer and all of that stuff? Are we going to be renting them to anybody to help supplement some of the cost?
So the ones that would be in FAC, they would be managing them and paying for the water and sewer. The one that we have at our police station, we would be covering that. However, one of the things that we're trying to do is anything that we can get invoiced before to go against this funding that's coming for us before the thirtieth, we are trying to do that. However, we will likely be paying for some of the water.
Just for the ones that are on the police station, not for the ones that are on FAC?
That's correct.
Okay. And then if you don't mind, how much more money do you have to spend before the thirtieth?
So we're still figuring that out. It's been a bit of a whirlwind. We're around the hundred thousand range of figuring out how much we can get reimbursed back and how, if there's any additional purchases. We're looking at some things like some bike racks and some other things that would just be really good for our community, but would also help support our shelter residents, I'll put it that way. And so we're working through that. If we are unable to spend all of the funds, CSC has a backup plan of some of it going to Jackson Street, which is a children's shelter that does do work here in Sweet Home as well. So regardless, there's still going to be services coming into Sweet Home.
So I know you may be already doing it, you looked into more picnic tables or those metal.
We already ordered some more picnic tables. So yes. And we ordered some lockers as well, again, for some of the storage. Or we believe that by having these lockers by PD, it'll both incentivize good behavior. It'll give us an opportunity to have FAC come and provide services. And it will get some of the items that are currently in doorways and off the street, hopefully into these lockers, and we can enforce that a little bit more thoroughly.
How about trash cans?
So trash cans is another topic of conversation. So we are talking about maybe having trash cans, particularly by PD, and also maybe another one by the library. However, we also, it gets challenging because of the extra work that then that puts on public works. So we're trying to weigh all of those factors.
It just occurred to me, the hand washing stations?
Yes.
Is a possibility.
Actually, so these bathrooms will have hand washing, but we could have a separate hand washing station. I'll look at that tomorrow.
Madam Mayor, may I ask one more? So what is the turnaround time for reimbursement after you spend the money and the guarantee that we are going to be reimbursed for these purchases?
Typically, it's within two months.
Thank you.
Great, how are we going to get water and stuff to bed? Who's going to be putting that in for that? Because it's not going to have a system down there, is it, on the police's?
So all units that we specked out are going to be self-contained, just like an RV. They'll have three hundred, four hundred gallon storage. They have, you can hook them up to water with the appropriate hose. And so it'll basically be just like if you go camping down here at River Bend or whatever. And then we would then be responsible for probably pulling that and dumping it on a daily basis if we don't get a permanent hooked up for that.
Yeah.
So the trailer could be moved, but yet we have a faucet and then maybe a clean out or something that it connects to. And we'll figure that out, but it wouldn't be extensive. But they all are self-contained. It just would need labor to move it around and dump it and do that. Do we have a unit that we can put on a water of three thousand gallons and take it to that place behind the police station? Or is somebody going to have to do it for like drought? No, so I think the units are designed, you hook them up with a hose, just like you would your RV. And they'll have a water supply. And so we will find a hose bid somewhere and get them connected wherever spot we put them. The challenging side of that is what do we do with the wastewater from the laundry or, you know, from the showers, restrooms? And it has a containment in there. And so my guys would then have to pull it over to a manhole and then dump it in and then bring it back. Ideally, if we're going to leave it in one spot, it would probably labor-wise be to our advantage to install something down the road. And we'll look at that.
Yeah.
And we can install four-inch ABS-type stuff very inexpensive. We could do it quick. So that wouldn't be a big cost. But for the most part, they're designed to be self-contained and operate as such.
So I have another question. Is this revenue designed to only serve the PD site and FAC site? Or is it designed to serve other places that are frequented by our homeless population? Because I see them at some of our other parks. And so if you're talking bicycle racks or hand washing stations or things like that, maybe there's a broader use so that we could utilize a few more.
Absolutely. So it is a little challenging in what is approved. We have to be able to justify that this is an area where there is camping or something along those lines. However, we are trying to look at some additional resources at our library. And we have been looking at some of the parks too, because you bring up a very valid point. As far as the shower trailers are concerned, one thing to be aware of is after we have purchased them and ordered them, it'll still be a few months before they are delivered. So it'll take some time. And this is also going to allow us to work out some of the kinks and some of the determining factors on what exactly we want to do. After we have had these shower trailers for a while, it may be possible that we may choose to move them to another location to still service those residents. And the benefit of the types of trailers that Greg specked out for us too on being self-contained is that it's much more, it's much easier to do that, and all of them can be modified. So if in the future, we had a large fire event or something else, these trailers could be moved closer to an evacuation center. But they are being used for our homeless residents.
Oh, and I'm, oh, sorry. Along with the other councils, I'd like to thank everybody that's worked on this. I think it's a possibility because this is a huge jump forward for us. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of two shower bathroom trailers and one laundry trailer. It's detailed in the document.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Pro Tim Muller?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
We have seven ayes and no nays to purchase a bathroom, shower, and laundry trailers. Moving on, we have no ordinance or bills, reports of committees. Any committees have reports that they would like to share at this time?
We had a library board meeting, and we, as a workshop, they evaluated several potential sites. Nothing yet to come with our council. It's just a little premature, so we're still working on it.
Great, thank you for that update.
Madam Mayor, the YAC has one of their gals that had surgery, so I just want to wish her well. And there's some sports events going on for the other gals, so we're going to reschedule.
Sounds great. Thank you for that update.
I think there's a traffic safety committee meeting tomorrow. Hopefully, it goes all good.
Wonderful, thank you for that. Okay. Moving on, reports of city officials, city managers report.
Thank you, I'll keep this fairly short. Do you want to remind everybody that we have the Harvest Festival coming up on October seventh? And we are going to be noticing that there may be a possibility of a quorum. So we hope to see as many counselors there as possible. Any of you planning on attending? Oh, that's great news. Okay, wonderful, thank you. And we still need more pie and chili contestants to come and provide pie and chili. So if anybody, tell your friends.
Angela?
Ten o'clock. We asked them to drop it off, and it has to be non-perishable. So there are prizes and awards and trophies that go along with it and bragging rights, so.
And what time is the event begin at? I don't see it on the.
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock, okay, great, thank you.
And we're also going to be thanking Fitzpatrick publicly and having few other things happening. So it should be a really good day. Tomorrow, some of you have, may have seen a request for a special meeting. And that is tomorrow at six thirty, if you can attend. We just need to have a quorum, but this is for security services, for the security services that we currently provide for FAC. Our current security services, the company actually dissolved about a month ago or so, two months ago. So we had to put out another RFP and select, well, ask for proposals so that then we can select a new security services company to provide security services at FAC. This is something that in our MOU was decided on a while back, long before I was here, in order to support them in moving their shelter forward. If we can go ahead and have this approved and council can approve it and we can have them invoice it, we can have this funding cover for the next year of the. we can have this funding cover for the next year of these security services, which means that amount does not need to go out of our general fund. It can go into other projects that the council decides on.
So what you're saying is that free money could also cover the security for the next.
That is exactly what I'm saying, just much more succinctly. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, I, I have to disagree with you. This is not free money.
I understand.
Free money is not free.
I understand that, but it is a grant that was provided, it's external money. External money that was provided to us and yes, that we would be able to bill our security towards.
Exactly.
But we need a quorum here tomorrow.
That is correct.
Okay. I will be here.
Wonderful.
He doesn't need to.
So does that seem like something that can happen? See a little wonderful? Okay. Beautiful. You got it.
I'm working in Mount Angel, so I'll try my best. Understand, this is very, very short notice. All of this has been very interesting. So I do want to thank Commissioner Tucker again on, for helping us have this funding. And I also want to thank the C S C. They have been amazing partners in helping us figure this out. So I want to thank all of you too on supporting this sort of crazy timeline and, and helping everything moving, move forward. And then huge thanks to staff because we have had quite a few meetings on this. I also have been under the weather, as I think many of you are aware, and they all have been stepping up and just making this happen. So it's been really, really appreciated. And then finally, I also have to do a special thank you to Matt Brown for all of his work on the rate studies and all of this. So thank you. That's all for me for now.
Okay. Moving on, the mayor's report. So I wanted to do this earlier, but I just want to extend my deepest sympathies to the family of Steve Druckenmiller and Lynn County Commissioners and the staff of Lynn County as they mourn the loss of their family member and friend. He was the second largest serving elected official in the history of Lynn County. And he worked at the county courthouse since 1979, but was county clerk since 1986. So he knew elections in and out. I knew that he was an honest man. So I know that he will be missed. So I just want to extend our deepest sympathies to all of them. I also wanted to do a little presentation. On September, September 21st of last year, we hired a new city manager. And October 1st was official start date. But she's been here one year and I think she's done an excellent job. And this next month, we will be completing evaluations for our city managers. So if you could just take one of these. I'd like these to be completed and then we will have an executive session on October 24th at 5:30 P M to present our reviews to her. But because her anniversary is before we can present these evaluations and because I think she's done an excellent job, I would like to just go over some of the things that she's accomplished. She dove into a mess and immediately began to reconcile the past monthly bank statements for the year prior to her arrival. She began to also work on the audit that was also behind. She simplified and cut our budget by about 1.5 million dollars. She worked side by side with the F A C to get the managed facility opened and to clean up our unmanaged homeless problem. She's networked with county and regional leaders and have garnered $610,000 grant, which we've just discussed thoroughly to reimburse the city for their work and also help with other improvements. She has worked tirelessly to secure funding for the Mahler Water Reclamation Facility, spearheaded the Paint the Town project acquiring the support of both Miller Paint and Fitzpatrick Painting. She instituted a 410 Work Week, which has increased staff morale and given working individuals like myself more access to city hall as far as being open earlier and later. She has worked to improve our code enforcement by abating several properties. And so I just want to thank her with this. So thank you so much. Kelsey, would you come forward? It says, with sincere appreciation, we hereby present Kelsey Young with this award for a stellar first year as Sweet Home Oregon City Manager. Yes, you do, because everybody can use constructive feedback. So yes, your input matters. I'd like those turned in as soon as possible. But I just want to say again, thank you to Kelsey for the work she's been doing for our community. Moving on, is there any other questions or reports that directors want to present?
I would like to add a thank you to council for the support for the roof at the police department and H vac system. They buttoned up the H vac system, I think, last week and the roof project is pretty much almost done. The majority of it is, they just have a few things to finish up. So it was successful. I don't have to worry about leaks. H vac is ready for winter. Actually, it'll be great next summer. So we're just glad it's in. It was, it was on its way out and failing. I've been talking about, we've had three, three people to hire, so we're getting closer. We've got one person who is a lateral. Thank you for the pay adjustment at the police department that you all approved. That has brought him over to the P D. He used to work here years ago, went to the sheriff's office and will be coming back at the end of the month. So.
Jeff?
No, it's not. No, no, it's Mark Burkett. So he will be coming back at the end of the month. And gave a conditional job offer to another, not a lateral, but another person for a police officer position. So assuming he passes the medical, he should start soon as well as a part-time dispatcher. And so we have one other officer to hire. So we're, we're getting there. We're looking good. So.
Wonderful. That's a great report. Thank you. I have a question regarding the library reports. I'm not on the right page, so bear with me. Oh, that's all right. The previous year column, is that year to date, previous year for 2022? Or is that up to the same point in our calendar?
It's year to date.
Year to date. Okay.
So it's the full year.
A full year. So you are on record to eat your last year's record, like your last year's number.
Pretty every column.
Yeah.
We haven't already exceeded.
Yes. And some, you have already exceeded. So great job. Thank you. All right. Any other questions of directors? If not, we will close. Oh, wait, council business for the good of the order. I think we have a number of things there that we need to discuss.
A number of things. If I may, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to say congratulations, Kelsey, for receiving that award. And I'm just so thankful for all that you've done for our city. You really deserve it and we'd be in a mess if you weren't here. So secondly, if that's okay, I would like to add to the agenda that we have some safety net for most vulnerable people for the increases that we just passed on our next meeting. So I don't know how to go about that.
I think we need a consensus of council to add that to the agenda. So please just let me know what your thoughts are, counselors. Counselor Gorley? Okay.
Me either.
Okay. Sounds good. So we can add that to the agenda. Thank you.
And then lastly, I really would like to do some formal thank you to Commissioner Tucker for what he's done for our community in regards to the homelessness. The money that he's brought in with the $610,000 to help support us in our effort and then just the advocacy that he's done on behalf of Lynn County for the governor to give us the county even some more money. So I don't, I don't know how to go about that, but that's something that I would like to also talk about.
Okay. We would need a consensus of council to do that. I would be willing to go to county commissioners meeting or other counselor to thank them. I don't know if there's anything else. We do have a city coin. I can, I can present a challenge coin to them. That'd be okay. Maybe even city manager young and I could go. Council is okay with that? Okay. Thank you very much. Was there anything else, Counselor Sanchez?
I think I've said enough. Thank you.
Anything else for council business for good of the order? This is an opportunity for any counselor to bring up business that they would like to accomplish. Nobody?
Well, now that, no, just kidding.
All right. So I will adjourn this meeting at 7:30 P M.